Met three citizens here.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Kevin.
We have a couple of different computers running here for the public to be able to talk, so.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order May 19th, 2022, at 7:02 PM. First thing to do is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Kevin, can you lead us on that?
My pledge of allegiance. United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
And then Mayor, if I could real quick.
Yes.
We'll be seeing 11.2 wildfire safety night.
He said 11.2 fall safety? Or firewise safety?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, we fire wildfire safety night, June 3rd.
Wildfire. All right. Jackie, can you take roll call?
Counselor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Counselor Bjornson has an excused absence today. Thank you, Jackie. And is there any more additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? Dawn, did your topic get added?
If you're talking about the admin report, I think it's on here.
The audit committee?
Or, yeah, audit, that's what I meant.
Okay, perfect. And. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
There is one thing I'd like to add in here is for the library board, we need to do some changes on it.
Changes to the resolution?
No, to the our page on the website.
Okay. Is that something that you can talk to Chief Martin about after the meeting?
Oh, okay, yeah, I can, yeah, no problem.
Thank you. If you need to talk to me about it, I can help too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jackie, could you scroll down a little bit? Thank you. A public comment, if there's anyone there at the, at the City Hall workspace, let's go ahead and take comment there first. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, not this time.
Okay, if there's anyone on the Zoom call, go ahead and raise your hand with the little icon that is under participants, or actually, I'm sorry, it's under reactions. You can raise your little emoji hand, and if you're unable to find that, you can just go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and address. Okay, so no public comment. Mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. I don't have any. Actually, I have one announcement, and it is, if you recall, the last meeting, I mentioned that we had a winner from the If I Were Mayor con- contest. So the state of Oregon cho- the, actually, I'm sorry. The Oregon Mayor's Association chose one of our students as a winner. Let me look up that name for you. Just so you guys know, there are all the schools, grade schools in all of Oregon, submit posters, essays, all sorts of different things based upon their grade level, and we submitted participants from third, fourth, and fifth grade. I'm sorry, I'm looking for that email. All right, I'll bring it up at the end of the meeting. The email's not coming up for me. I'll announce the name of the kid. Other than that, I don't have any announcements or proclamations. Onto council comments. Counselors, do you have any announcements?
I don't have any, oh, sorry, Dawn has her hand up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I did it after you, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't have any announcements, but there is something that I wanted to bring up for future discussion. And, you know, we have a lot of fantastic volunteers throughout our commen- our community that do things between committees and, you know, just like helping with parks, just a wide variety of things, you know, like the volunteers at the fire department. I think it would be great as we get closer to summer to maybe have some sort of like a barbecue together just to honor all the volunteers in our community and maybe give them a little small award or something to recognize all the fantastic volunteers that we have in our community that do things for all of us to help make our city a great place to live. So I'd really like to talk about that a little bit at some point. I did briefly talk about it with the mayor, and we we discussed possibly buttoning it up to one of the concerts in the park events coming up. And maybe rent the, the big building there at Green Waters to, you know, do something with concerts in the park at the same time, just to, just to honor and appreciate and acknowledge all of our volunteers, so.
I think it's a great idea, Counselor Whitney. Is that something that you just want to put the seed in everybody's ear tonight? And then talk about it at the next meeting, or would you like to add it on the agenda for tonight?
I would like to just put the seed out there, and then, you know, come up with a agenda item later and really take a chance to look at and make sure that building's not being rented at one of those times that might look good for an event like that, and really take some time to think about how it might look and, and, you know, how we could come up with money for that, or if we need to come up with money for that, if we can find a way to do some sort of potluck event or something. But yeah.
Something you'd like to touch bases with me, and we can bring that back?
Yeah, that would be great.
Either June 3rd or.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, definitely, just, yeah. I just want to make acknowledging people because so vital, what everybody does, and everybody's commitments to the community is just wonderful.
I love it, and that would be a barbecue for all volunteers of the city, no matter what committee or wherever they're helping out, correct?
Exactly, and I, and it would be nice to make sure we extend an invitation to each person. Well, we could save this for a meeting, going into a little more, but, you know, to really make sure we get people there and, you know, just really definitely acknowledge all the volunteers and we have in our community.
Okay. Thank you, great idea. Counselor Kenyon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of things I just wanted to throw out there for. Well, one thing for future discussion is in reviewing the minutes from, that are in our packet tonight, I noticed that the petition was presented to us a few months ago. And I know that we're delayed with our budget season process to even start, so I was wanting to just kind of maybe add to an agenda for, as soon as budget season is over, to have council discussion item be how to respond to the petition. Maybe the first meeting in July.
Okay, I added petition response for future meeting.
And then the thing that I wanted to bring up in in council. Am I doing feedback? Sorry. Um. It was brought up that our, our city website and YouTube channel are behind on having videos posted from our meetings, and I know it's been brought up a couple of times at least, and so I wanted to offer, if it's necessary, to come down to City Hall and sit and get those videos posted somehow. Is that, is that an option?
Chief, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, that's something we could talk about. Frankly, some of the meetings that other people, so we don't have videos yet, and so I'm just kind of waiting on those. And then from the last meeting, we're just, that's my fault, we're behind on that one, but a couple of meetings before that, we're nervous, have the videos.
Um. On the YouTube channel is from February, so are you saying that more have been added to the website, but they're just not on YouTube?
Off the look, because I actually looked at YouTube today, and the four, seven meeting was the last one that I saw on there. So there was the first meeting in April was the last meeting that I know that was posted on, on YouTube.
Okay, maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot. I'll catch.
We'll check that, Counselor Kenyon, because it's on the YouTube page. I didn't actually clarify if it's on the public part of it, but there is one that the last one that's on the YouTube page that I can log into is, is from four, seven.
Okay, I'll catch up with you later if I, after I look again.
Sounds good.
Um, just to make sure you guys are aware, a couple of the meetings were hosted from my personal computer. So I just talked to Chief Martin about this today, and I might use the city's IT guy to help get that off there, because it has to be basically uploaded and then the executive session extracted from it so that it can be uploaded to the YouTube and also the YouTube account and the city's website. So that's my fault for those couple meetings. Okay, but we'll make sure that we make those a priority. Did you have anything else, Counselor Kenyon?
Nope.
Okay, Counselor Spleedoff?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question. Before all this stuff come up with the, our Pro Tem city administration, we had a, one of our ex-counselors interested in property out at the OIP in.
Audi, Audi?
Yes, yes.
That's not public information?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other counselors that have questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
I wondered if we could have the update on the status of the council chambers.
Um, just a little bit, I need to meet with both Counselor Whitney and Counselor Coker. Unfortunately, all our schedules have been super busy. We have purchased the TV, they're sitting in the council chambers, and with that, we purchased the mounts. Colleen got an estimate for the electrical cost to put in some extra outlets in that room from, I think it's Bear Mountain Electric. So it's really, I'm not sure, Chief Martin, do you know if the camera, the big one has been received yet? I know that it was ordered.
Uh, Colleen is on here, I'm sure, I am not sure if we got the big camera or not yet.
Okay. So some of the equipment has been purchased. We really need to set aside a day where we can get some help to come in there and come paint and start moving furniture around and just kind of doing the grunt work and the stuff that needs to happen. And the committee needs to get together and make a couple of decisions too, before we can move forward.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, consent agenda?
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Yep, hold on. Counselor Bjornson? Oh, sorry. Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto appointments, Chief Martin, I'll let you introduce these two, and Jackie, can you scroll down to Robert Woodson and then Lisa Samuelson? Yes.
Um, were you to be looking at the applications from the?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Was was I on mute when I said that?
No.
Oh.
So we request a motion from the council to staff is requesting the approval of Robert Woodson to the Library Board Committee. And his application is there before you. And did you have, if you have any questions for him, I was gonna give him the laptop, if you, you guys can ask any questions you feel.
Thank you. I move to accept the volunteer nomination of Robert Woodson for the library board for a term that would end in December 31st of 2025.
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion or questions? I have a question for Robert, if he's available. Hi, Robert, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm just curious, what interests you into being a part of the library board, and just a little bit, how long you've been in the community?
Uh, I'm probably there three times a week. It's, I think, the finest organization in the city. Extremely well-run. I believe currently there's at least ten volunteers that keep everything moving. Extremely well-organized. My mother was a schoolteacher and my sister was a librarian, so I'm clear with the activities. So I would like to, I would like to help in whatever way I can, and Georgie said there was an opening on the board and suggested that I do that.
Thank you. Can everybody be able to please? Oh, I bet that's Kevin's song.
Yeah. The tracks too.
Okay, nevermind.
So, um, I see that Robert lives in Westford.
What? Just turn your volume down.
I, I think I remember they were just reading this a few minutes ago, that the library positions that can be outside of the city, is that correct, Counselor Kenyon?
Yes, it is. I read the review tonight, and there are a total of six members, four of which have to be from Oak Ridge, and the other two seats are available to Westford residents, well, actually, to the zip code nine, seven, what is it? Whatever the West.
We have to know right now how many people that we have that are out of city limits.
I know the names of all the members that are on the committee, but I do not know where they live. Find their applications. I just looked up the appointments that we made on, in our minutes online. So we have a Julia Odor, Jessica Atkins, Jeanne Caballo, Terry Deloche, and Annie Brown. Does anyone know if those are all Oak Ridge residents?
I do. I can verify, three of them are.
The city recorder believes they are.
Okay.
It perfect, I'm satisfied with that. I just wanted to double-check that piece and make sure we were within our parameters.
Thanks for catching that, Counselor Whitney.
And, uh, council, I'll, I'll confirm that tomorrow, just to make sure.
Thank you.
I can assure you that I'm not moving out of Westford.
Yeah, to verify, the other zip code is nine, seven, four, nine, two.
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
Can I take? Oh, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry, you cut out. What was that, Counsel Kenyon?
I wondered if I could have the floor for a sec.
Yes, sorry, I thought I asked you.
Um. I wanted to say thank you for applying, Robert. I'm looking forward to having that library committee full. I'm sure you'll be an excellent asset to the team.
Thank you, Dawn.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yeah, I'm glad to see you getting an interest into our library here, and I'm soon gonna be back capable of going to the meetings and stuff. I've had a little medical issues, and we need to fill that other position, get us all up going good. So thank you for applying.
You're welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, Jackie, can we call for the vote?
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker? Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
All right, Mayor and Counselor, and we have a nine point two, it's a Lisa, Lisa Samuelson to the Budget Committee and
Kevin, didn't we have two appointments?
Yeah, I do not hear, am I, am I not coming through? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, they can.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, it's nine point two, Lisa Samuelson to the Budget Committee. And it's request for council action for a motion to approve or deny her application. Effort, staff recommends approval, and there is the council motion of Jackie, if you can scroll down some to the application. And Lisa is here, if there's any questions.
I have a motion for my floor.
I move to accept the volunteer nomination of Lisa Samuelson as presented for a term that would end December 31st of 2024.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Coker. Go ahead with discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes. Just second, wait till it gets you moved, the computer timing does it, it goes in. Hello? What kind of experience do you have?
Well, we just got done with the budget for the school, for the school, and I was on that committee. It was very simple. But I am a taxpayer and I'm interested in where my money goes.
Okay. So you willing to work long hours and hard work?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, my question is, I was looking at the application, and in the section where it says, if applying for a board or committee, please tell us why you were interested in serving. And I didn't see anything there, so I was just wondering if you could answer us to why you're interested in serving on this committee.
Well, I heard that there was, you needed more people on the committee, and after trying to find people for the committee, for the school board, I, I felt that it was so hard to find someone to fill the positions there. I thought that it was so hard to find someone to fill the positions there. I thought that maybe I could help here, and I just didn't want to see space not filled.
Thank you.
Questions for Lisa? Only thing I have is Lisa, thank you for applying. That's a lot of work to be on the school budget committee and then to jump right into another one. So thank you very much for volunteering your time. Jackie, can we call for the vote? Did you have a question?
I just wanted to reiterate your sentiments as well. Thank you, Lisa, for applying and being willing.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
Counselor Sledoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt? What did you say?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Thank you very much, Lisa. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'll let, or Kenyon, go ahead and lead this part and report on our
I'm sure. So our Audit Committee met to discuss the need to appoint a new citizen budget committee member to this committee at our first meeting of the Budget Committee next week. And we also held a meeting with our auditor, Brad Torino, to receive an update on the status of our fiscal year 2021 audit, which has not been filed with the state of Oregon to date. We learned that the largest reason for the delay in filing was poor response times in communication and information being shared from the Finance Director and City Administrator Administration last fall. Our auditors are currently still waiting to receive back a couple pieces of information from our new Finance Director before they can file the package with the state of Oregon. It's anticipated that the audit will be filled with, or filed with the state by the end of June 2022. All the proper extensions have been filed, and there's no financial penalty anticipated. Brad assured us that last year's audit was started near the end of 2021, or June of 2021, and they will do so again this year. We requested that Brad schedule a time slot to meet with the Audit Committee in October of 2022 to update us on the status, and we were all in consensus that we would like to see this year's audit filed on time in December 2022. So our next steps are, after the appointment of the new citizen budget member, we'll schedule a meeting to take place in July to review the resolution for this committee and set up our timeline for meetings between October and December of 2022. And Counselor Kenyon will check in with the auditors in early June to find out the status of the current audit and see if they are still on schedule to file by the end of June, respectfully submitted by Counselor Kenyon.
Do you have any questions for Counselor Kenyon?
So Dawn, I just wanted to let you know that I reached out to our auditor today and let him know that it will be a priority of mine to get him everything next week to finish up on our end.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all I had, Mayor.
Kevin, can you put that on the agenda that we advertise for a citizen budget committee member, and just so that everybody remembers, that needs to be a citizen that is currently on the Budget Committee that will serve on the Audit Committee? Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
I just wanted to find out, how do we keep this from repeating itself? Is there anything that council should do?
Thank you, Adi. I actually briefly discussed that with the auditors, and Mayor Hollitt was present as well. We realized that the Audit Committee is a very important part of the process, and last year, the Audit Committee didn't meet. So that could be where it fell through the cracks, because the council, being the Audit Committee, wasn't made aware that the city wasn't coordinating well with the auditors. And they assured us that as long as that's happening and the Audit Committee is involved to oversee, then we shouldn't have those delays moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reporting on that, Counselor Kenyon.
Uh huh.
All right, next item on the agenda.
And Mayor, did you want me to go over this, or do you want to go over this?
Go ahead. I'll speak up when I need to.
All right, this is a business from the City Council. This is the intergovernmental agreement with Lane Council of Governments. The background is IGA between Oak Ridge and the Lane Council of Governments to provide financial and budget assistance to the City of Oak Ridge, providing fiscal controls, oversight, and process support to the city staff. The staff recommends the acceptance of the motion of the council, and the motion is before you, and if Jackie could scroll down, if you have questions, there is a copy in your packet of the IGA with ElCog for those services.
Give a little background for citizens. We reached out to ElCog and asked them to come in and provide us some budgetary assistance. We, with the interim person that we had, we just found a lot of really critical errors in the budget that we thought we really needed some expertise to come in and help us, and Colleen and have been working their tails off on this, and this little piece to the puzzle is going to just give them that expertise to kind of look into it and make sure that we're really crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
And just a bit of information, she will be with us tomorrow morning, the first morning, and Colleen and I will be working with her. She's worked with the city before from ElCog in the past, so she has some Oak Ridge history as well.
I move to accept the IGA and permit the mayor to sign the agreement with ElCog as presented.
I'll second that.
Made from Counselor Kenyon and seconded by a Counselor Coker. Is there any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Hold on, I have
Go ahead.
Adi, you can take Adi's first. I was trying to get my hand up.
Go ahead, Adi.
Okay, I just wanted, do we have approximate cost? I seen in there how much it is an hour, but do we know approximately how much? Is there any way to tell that or not?
I can't speak to that. She's going to help us tomorrow, Friday, and then we believe on Monday, and then she would be available through Zoom if council has questions as we go through the budget process, so. It could be tied to, so for hours tomorrow and Monday, and then for working hours of those two days, and then as needed for budget meetings.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and another thing, can we afford it? Or can we afford not to?
That would have been my question.
Frankly, Colleen and I need the help, because there's parts of the budget that neither one of us are up to speed on, and we need the help. It's, to me, it's a thing we have to do.
Okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, so will Kena be coming to Oak Ridge to do this, or will you guys be able to do this by, through like Teams or Zoom or some other format?
I believe she's tomorrow morning to meet with Colleen and I, and then Harvard will probably be through Zoom going into the future, but we're hoping to, to meet in person with her tomorrow and Monday.
Okay, and so do we know if this contract will cover her gas expenses, or will we be paying that as well?
No, I confirmed that with ElCog, but if there is travel mileage, we pay the government rate on that, not what's done prior.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I confirmed with Brenda Wilson that we will be paying the government mileage rate, but most likely 90% of this will be done remotely.
Okay, yeah, I was just concerned, because I know that the travel time will be paying the hourly rate and then the mileage, so, you know, it can add up really quickly if you have a lot of days like that.
I don't anticipate the travel being more than tomorrow and Monday, and then if we need her on Tuesday through Zoom, and then of course, meetings, if the council would like, or the Budget Committee would like to speak to her during meetings, to clarify any form of that, it'd also be through Zoom.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
A couple of things. I would want to ask for it to be clarified, we will be paying an hourly rate during their travel. I'm okay if we have to, but that doesn't sound right to me. I think just being reimbursed for mileage is pretty standard, but I could be wrong. Um.
Dawn, I can probably answer that. Typically, professional services, we would have to pay for the travel as well.
Pay for the time as well?
Yeah.
Huh, okay. Um, and then, aside from that, I just wanted to comment that I think it's absolutely necessary, and in my opinion, take as much time as you need to get what you need so that we have a budget presented to us.
Very agreed on. Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
Okay, I agree with Dawn is to take as much time as needed to make sure that we get a good budget to us and where we can really work with it. Now, let me confirm, her time does start when she leaves Eugene, or wherever she lives, and ends in when she gets back, or ends when she stops you at Oak Ridge?
I'll confirm that, but most likely when people do professional services, it's, it's from door to door.
Door to door. Okay, thank you.
Or worksite to worksite, so.
So she is held up by traffic, something traffic, we're paying for a time setting of traffic too?
I believe so, sir.
Because some of that can really add up on 58. If you could check that out for us, please, I would appreciate that, Kevin. Okay, I'm done.
Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Sledoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye. 11.1 surplus?
Mayor, we can barely hear you. Everybody else can drill loud.
I know, I'm trying to speak louder. Did you guys hear that I said surplus? 11.1, thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, business from the City Administrator, 11.1 is the Oak Ridge Fire Department is requesting a surplus vehicle, and we're requesting an action from the council and the motions before you, as well as the information sheet that came from Captain Hollitt. Hopefully, everybody got to look at that. The subject is Oak Ridge Fire Department's requesting to surplus a vehicle. It is a 1996 international diesel ambulance. Captain Hollitt has the requested amendment attached to this council action. Staff recommends the acceptance by the council for a motion to approve it.
I move to accept the OFD request to surplus the 1996 international ambulance through sealed bid process and proceeds to be returned to the OFD budget as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion, motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Coker. Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
Yes, I'd like to find out why it's sealed bid only. Has all the rest of sales have been open to the internet?
We've done, we've done bids both ways through a third-party company, and then we're not going to go to the third-party company this time, so typically speaking, those are, those are sealed bids, and we have done that in the past.
And how do they get a sealed bid for this?
All sealed bid means is that they don't open the bids until whenever the deadline is.
Okay, so where would they get the bid to bid for it?
That will be on all the announcements.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be advertising that as well as the fire department, so, and then the fire department will take those bids and bring them to the city hall.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
So is that like a public auction or or through the internet?
It's like any, it would be posted on probably the city's website and Facebook, and anybody can make bids on it.
Okay.
Yeah, Counselor Kenyon, so we'll, we'll most likely post it on the city's stuff and the three Facebook pages, and then people basically put their bid in the envelope and bring it in, and so it's not actually like open bidding against each other, it's a sealed bid, so the fire department will go through it and then take their highest bid.
Perfect.
All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Sledoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Aye.
My name called for that vote?
No.
She said you were second one.
Okay.
We didn't hear.
And then we will, eleven point two is wildfire safety night, uh, request for fee exemption, and that is actually at the very back of your packets. So, Jack, he'll scroll through here, the financial report in a little bit. And I believe somebody is online from them, the first questions. And I believe it's, uh, I just scrolled past some Dustin. So, Mayor and Council, this is a request from the for wildfire safety night park use fee waiver. The background is the Southern Lament Forest Collaborative and the Oak Ridge Air requesting a fee waiver for use of green waters. Park community building amphitheater overflow for wildfire safety night, community event that is scheduled for June third. Uh, staff recommend acceptance by motion of the council. Uh, the financial impact is approximately three hundred and forty dollars in lost rent revenue. And there's an attached, a couple of attachments there, event permits and a brochure from, from the event. And Dustin is on here if there is questions.
Dawn, did you have a question?
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, actually, as a sidebar, I wanted to make a request that when we're turning the laptop at City Hall for the vote, could, could we lift it and turn it rather than sliding it on the table because it's very loud?
Okay, yep.
And, um, as far as the waiver goes, I don't really have any questions, um, other than why is it coming to us so late when the, uh, the event is very soon? It says on the application that it's supposed to be submitted, I think, forty-five days in advance if it's coming to council. Something like that.
Yeah, sure. Um, we've had a lot of projects going on lately. Um, we were doing a lot of playing for the tree planting festival, so it's all excuses. But it's mostly just because we didn't have the list of vendors down and we didn't know the exact time. We had it, uh, listed for later, but it turned out that, uh, Forest Service and Oregon Department of Forestry and some other fire officials couldn't attend except for on June third, so we had to push it back a couple of weeks. And that's, that's the main reason that it's coming so late to you, so apologies about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have a lot of questions, other than I really appreciate you guys putting on this event. I attended the event last year. I thought it was a really great part of wildlife safe, excuse me, wildfire safety for Oak Ridge, especially because it kind of kicked off the summer and then we had the big whis fire. So, um, I really appreciate you guys' work and I will definitely be there.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and we'll definitely be talking about what some of the people learned from the whis fire and, you know, how we can go forward this year. So I'm excited for it. I think a lot of people are RSCP'd. And, uh, we'll have some good food there too, so I hope we can all see you June third at, uh, six o'clock about, yeah.
All right, Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Oh, thank you.
Was there a motion yet? We're wondering, we don't think there was a motion.
I was just wondering that myself, because I think we went right into discussion.
Sorry, I thought there was a motion and it was seconded by Counselor Coker?
I don't think so.
No, there wasn't.
That was the previous one, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move to accept the fee waiver to Southern Lament Forest Collaborative and Oak Ridge Air for wildfire safety night as presented.
I'll second.
Made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Sledoff. Do we have any more discussion? Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Sledoff?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you, and thank you for doing this, Dustin. Thank all you guys.
Council and Mayor, I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Dustin, for coming tonight and answering questions.
All right, what do we have for a report of staff?
Uh, I have a library report and I, it looks like I left it in my office. I'll, I'll be right back and I don't see any of the fire people on tonight. I know Captain Hollitt was under the weather and Captain Higgins has been busy, so. And, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, I have spoken to Georgie quite a bit lately. She's been working on input for her budget as well. And, uh, the library's, uh, been plugging along, lots of people go over there. Uh, one thing that she wanted to note that was actually really interested me as well is they did a Oregon section. So they, they made a section in the library just for books that are about Oregon. Uh, some like nonfiction books about Oregon and then Oregon authors. And so there's a whole section kind of in the, I guess it'd be the south wall of the library. So many citizens are interested to go check that out. It's in the south wall of the library. And as far as other reports, I know Robert had a report, uh, I can send that out to the council. We'll, or kick it to the next meeting and I'll have to apologize, the police department reports. I've been doing city administrator stuff and completely forgot about the police department report. So I can either bring that to them the next meeting or do it, do double in June.
Wait, well, what works for you then?
And then, uh, we have the financial attached to the packet there. Hopefully everybody got a chance to look at it. And Colleen is online if there are any questions.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
I had something to add to the report for library. Uh, their book collection, uh, box has been installed down on, uh, Highway fifty-eight, it's between, uh, Cowgirl Cooking and the Postal Pharmacy. It'll be picked up three times a week. And, uh, they, they'll pick up their, their books after that, so the people don't have to go to the library to drop their books off. And I guess there was a a bench installed on the back deck at the, uh, library memorandum to Susan Valerie Vincent. And they dedicated it on the fourteenth at noon. And there, they were planning on having a book sale down there during the tree planting parade. But some reason there wasn't any books to sell and it, they said it was raining and pretty bad weather out there anyway, so they canceled that one. And they would like to see about getting a fax machine, uh, and stuff down there. Georgie was going to talk to Travis about a fax line. Their next meeting is supposed to be the tenth of July at four P M. So just some information on that too, to add to Kevin's report.
Cool. Are there any questions on the financial report here for Colleen?
Mayor Hollitt?
Go ahead, Counselor Hooker.
Sorry about that. I have a question of something on the, uh, fee waivers. And I'm not sure if now would be okay to bring it up.
All right, go ahead.
Just wondering, I know at one time we had all discussed what was going on, but I don't remember. Do we repay fee waivers out of the RTMP?
That is an excellent question. We, if I, if memory serves me right, we should actually be designating where we pay for those, uh, fee waivers out. I think Counselor Kenyon has talked about that quite a few times. So I think that's probably a good idea for us to follow that up with a motion on where we would like, uh, the finance director to take that. Counselor Kenyon, do you agree with that?
Um, actually, my suggestion was going to be that we need to have, we need to actually have an agenda item to discuss fee waivers so that we can set a policy so that it can always be, you know, done the same way we've had issues a few different times over fee waivers in the last couple of years. And I really think we should get it pounded out. As far as should it come out of RTMP or TRT? I think that those funds are specifically supposed to be used for events that create tourism or overnight room stays. And I'm not sure if this event would qualify for that. So I think we would just have to take the hint.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Kenyon. I don't believe that we can, I know we can't take it out of RTMP. I'm not sure about TRT. So that might do, but, but my first remembrance is that this event wouldn't qualify. And I also agree with Counselor Kenyon too, for council to set a policy, because this has been, gone back and forth a few times on, on stuff.
Yeah, this was actually one of the projects I was working on with Kevin Cronin. But we just hadn't made it very far on it. I'll put that on a future agenda. Thanks for bringing it up, Counselor Hooker.
Thank you.
All right, questions on the financial report? Counselor Kenyon, did you have something?
I do. I have a couple of things. Let me see if I can find my notes. Um, one thing I wanted to ask for, um, Colleen is uh, if you can scroll, Jackie, to the top of this report where the first line item is right there. Um, I've noticed the beginning fund balance for every fund throughout this report in the year-to-date actual column has a zero. And I do know that in the past, um, probably let's see, we're in twenty twenty-two, so probably through maybe February of twenty twenty-one or even a little later, we, there was always a number there and it was based off of whatever the, you know, end-of-year finances were from, from the previous year. Uh, can you find out for us why that number is now a zero and if it's possible to adjust that? Could you?
So are you specifically only asking about the, the first revenue account? Or are you talking about
Oh.
anything that has a zero in it?
No, not anything with a zero, but, uh, specifically beginning fund balance number for every fund.
You're talking about year-to-date actual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, usually that number stays the same throughout the year. It's just that it gets inputted probably in, in July or August, whenever you're done.
Right. Anything in here as far as the budget stuff would have been done last year for July of one.
Yeah.
Um, but I can look at that beginning revenue account to see what is a zero in the year-to-date.
Okay, and then also we used to get another statement of revenue and expenditure report that showed a summary per fund, like it said, um, for example, the library and the police, you know, every single fund, what the uh, revenue and expenses and the amount of over expenses. You know, like a summary.
So it, it would be this report, but it was summarized by a, correct. So Jackie, could you go down a little bit, see?
I think, I think right there.
A little bit more, would you? So, yeah, keep going. I want to see if it, if it's totaling by, um. No, it must be the way I pulled the report. So I will make sure that I get it to summarize for account, um, on the next, uh, financial report.
So to clarify, this, this one just does it by fund. So you want it broken down to the specific departments, because the general fund has quite a few. Is that what you are looking for, Dawn?
Okay, um, you know what I'll do? I will send you, Colleen, an example of the report that we used to get in addition to this. I don't want this one to stop. The other one is an additional one.
Okay, got it. Yeah, if you could send me that, I'll be glad to do it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and then, um, for Kevin, I wonder if you could get us an update on the, um, on the library right now, it appears to be a lot of overspending on the, in the library department. I wondered if you could find out why.
So she did, Georgie did talk to me about that and there was a couple of lines that, uh, and I'm not sure if it was Counselor Budget Committee cut last year, but they couldn't actually cut because they were grants. So she spent the amount that the grant, that the grant allowed. So there was, there was a couple of lines, the summer reading program, I believe, was one. And I think there was something with donations and I think one other grant, but she spent the grant a lot, lot of money. And it, I'm calling them grants, but I think it's money that she gets every year for the library. Just for instance, I believe the, for whatever reason, the- Just for instance, I believe the, for whatever reason, the summer reading program was cut by five, cut to $500, but she legally had to spend a thousand because that's how much she was given for that program, if that makes sense. That money could not be used for anything else except for the summer reading program. And for some reason it was 500, and she actually just told me that this morning, so. And I can clarify on the other ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Sweetoff.
Yeah, could you go back up, please? Okay. Uh, I see we're back here in computer equipment, supplies and support. We're over by 206%. And we've got a lot of overtures.
Um. Just to interject really quick here, based on the, the general fund account number, that is the administration department's line. General ledger. I, I said general fund. I'm sorry.
General ledger, okay.
Um, I would have to pull up that GL account and see what's exactly in there and why, because, you know, I haven't been here long enough to know. But the other thing that is, is quite a bit over is the building maintenance, and that's because our building has no, like, it needs way more maintenance than what we're doing to it. So that's just what happens. I mean, we've had plumbing problems. We've had other issues just from when I've been here in the last few months. So that's something that cannot be, you know, there's not much we can do about it. It just hasn't been kept up on.
I can testify to that because it, it, the police department has been flooded from upstairs twice. So that was non-anticipated stuff that just had to get fixed.
Counselor Sweetoff, did you have anything else?
Yeah, further in the report, there was some ridiculous amount. I don't, I can't get mine back up to find out, but it's like some big, long number that we were over in percentage. Down further in the report.
I did see one for 608%. Is that the one you're thinking of?
It might have been. Keep, keep on going.
Uh, it was page three, the 608%. It's materials and supplies in the library. That's the one I was asking about.
Okay, and then just above it, there's in the tower, the telephone computer tower up. Can you go back up?
Page three.
Page three. Okay. It was like, go down a little bit.
It's six lines.
Bottom. Dead Mountain Tower lease says we're 200 $206.30 over.
I, I will check on that. It appears to me that all was taken out of the police department, when that's technically supposed to be taken out of each department for the $900. I believe that's how the previous finance director worked that out. But as I remember the amount, and it appears the full amount is, has come out of the police department budget. And, and Colleen is able to check the GL codes on that to see where the money went, so we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I can, if I need to just look at how it's been done and it's not been done correctly, we can.
Okay, and then if you go on down quite a bit, there's more. It's another way on down. Well, there's a one right there in 524.71%, and that's is that? Okay, that's building maintenance, okay. Then the next one is seasonal work temp. No, that's telephone, okay. We're 242.20% over. Is, is that something to do with the tower too, or what?
That one is specific to the WAC based on the ledger number 18.
Okay.
I wondered about that myself.
Why?
Well, I can tell you that the phone bills there are nowhere near $23. So, I mean, landlines are very expensive right now, and that just doesn't seem like something was entered correctly from the beginning.
You mean? Amount or?
Yeah, that $22, $22.92, I believe that's the beginning budget line.
Right.
So that's, that's definitely an error there, so that would be why.
And is that part of the Wi-Fi system over there, or? Or I didn't know we had the telephones over there.
Yeah, we have several, several telephone lines out there.
So is there something we can do there, or? I just see.
Uh, sorry, I wanna interject. That first column is actually how much we had spent. Oh, this is different. Current budget. Oh, this report is different. I'm used to having that first column be what we had spent by this time last year for the same line.
Yeah, and see down at the bottom where it says general fund excess of revenue expenditures, it's got some astronomical amount that we're over.
That's a percentage.
Yeah. But that's a big number of percentage that we're over.
Well, it does look like the grand total says one cent in the annual budget, so when you spend 954,000, you only have budgeted one cent, you're way over budget. It's not the right numbers are entered in there.
Yeah, so I guess we need to work on that whole budget thing, because we got a lot of ovaries that doesn't make sense.
All right, well, I'm sure Colleen's gonna put a pin in it, so we can maybe look at that next time.
Yeah, sure. It's hard for me to look at this like on the computer screen like here, so. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any more financial questions?
Mayor Holland.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you to Colleen for all she's doing and what she's having to do and to Kevin for what he has taken the responsibility to do. I thank you both.
I'd like to second that too. Thank you, thank you both for coming in and trying to fix this mess that we're in.
Thank you. We'll get through.
Appreciate it as well. Thank you so much, both of you.
Yes, it's a big job ahead of you, and probably if you would have known this, and Vance calling, you may not have wanted in.
Right? You didn't warn me, honey.
And I wanna say thank you for saying that, counselors. We appreciate it.
Really.
And just to note, we froze up part of the time when you were talking about the financial stuff. One note I wanted to make is there's several of them. We're gonna have to go through the GL codes and, and look, because I can know in my budget, there was a couple stuff, things that were coded in the wrong one. So we will go through and check the ones that are real far over and make sure they're being coded right and, and if they're not, to get those fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you for answering all that too, Colleen. All right, if there isn't anything else on the financial report, I think that's about the end of the meeting, unless you have anything else, Kevin?
Uh, I just have one thing that I wanted to give you guys. It was a question asked with the bids for the well number two, the two appendix, the two options. And I talked to the city engineer about that, and they won't know for sure what to do with those until they open it up and look at everything. He did say most likely the seal one that I believe it's a clay seal, that will most likely have to be replaced, but that will come back to council at that time. And then also, I believe it was the pump part that was rebuilt sometime back, so it's fairly new. They won't know until they open it up if they have to replace that. So if those two things have to get, most likely the one will, but the other, if it does, both those things will come back to council at that time. I know that, I believe there was two counselors that asked questions about that, that I didn't have answers for at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
And then one other thing I had for council is, just because frankly, I've been pretty busy with doing, wearing all the hats. If there's something in past meetings before I came in as pro temp that you had asked for, I've been trying to skim some of those meetings to see, and I, if there was something you asked for in the past few months that you need to come up again in case I missed it, can you please give me an email or call me and let me know, so we don't let everything slip by? Because if, because I, I, I don't remember all of it from just sitting in there as police chief. So when there was a meeting I missed, because I was at training. So if there's anything that needs to come back up from those previous meetings, back, back to probably February, when Brian left, just can you let me know? And even if there's anything else that I don't, might have missed on my radar, if you guys could just either call or email me and say, hey, we talked about this on such and such, and that was supposed to be brought back up. So I don't wanna miss any of those.
Thank you.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I actually, you saying that, thank you, Kevin, reminded me that I came across something today and made a note to, to look into it in the future. Last year, a contract was brought to us to, that we have with ODOT for the, what do you call that thing, the rest area? And I saw in the minutes that we somehow get reimbursed for, like, we supply them with a list of all the expenses we had to manage the park every year that, you know, that we're doing the work and buying the supplies, and so we submit a list to get reimbursed. And I noticed that we didn't have any revenues on that, wherever it is in the financial report. So I wondered if that's something that you guys might not be aware of.
I remotely remember something about that, Counselor Kenyon, and we can do some research and try to figure that out.
All right.
I know that Franny's the person to speak to about that.
Excellent.
All right, I did wanna have that go back to the If I Were Mayor contest, and that winner was Daytona Ramirez, and his family has been notified, and we're gonna do something with the school coming up probably in a couple of weeks, and that's kind of when it fits in on the school's time. So if there are any counselors that would like to come and attend that assembly with me, that would be awesome. I'm super excited that we have an Oak Ridge kid that received an award, and I believe it's a hundred dollar gift as well.
Wow.
Yeah, it's cool.
I'd like to do it.
I would too.
Yeah, let me know, Mayor Holland. I'd like to be there.
I'll send it out to you guys.
Same here.
There are also, I went through, gosh, there was probably 100 submissions, and I went through them and chose three for each class. And so I was hoping that we could actually do kind of a City of Oak Ridge award to the kids, and if counselors and staff would like to be involved in that, that would be really cool too. There, our kids put in some really awesome stuff. So I'll email you guys when I know when that exact date is. Tina was looking at it, and she's not exactly sure yet. That is all I had. Is there any other kind of counselor comments? Anything else?
There was one thing. I'm trying to find it here. I guess they're closing the high school library. This is from the notes that I got from the meeting. So we're gonna be the only library out there, I guess.
Is it verified information, or should we look into that?
I'm gonna look into it a little more, because that was, it was just what was posted out here on it. I'm reading in here, trying to find out exactly where it said it.
Hey, are there any other comments?
I'll, I'll look into that further tomorrow.
Thank you. Chief, do you have any public there that wishes to?
We have one, we have one public member here. I'll just ask, do you have any public comments? He says he doesn't on it this time.
Okay, thank you. And if you're in the public on the Zoom, raise your hand, and I will call on you in order. If you're not able to raise your hand, just go ahead and unmute yourself. First one up would be Rusty. Go ahead and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Rusty Aklund, 48265 Commercial Street here in Oak Ridge. And I just, I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what Counselor Whitney talked about for your volunteer recognition, which I think is a great idea. But I would just like to ask you to remember, if you're gonna tag it on to a concert in the park and do a barbecue with free food, to remember that the vendors that come to the park with food, that's, they're making money off of what people buy, and that could impact the sales for the, the concert itself, because we have a lot of volunteers, and if they come and they bring their families for the free food, it's, it could take away from the vendors at the park that day. So just something to think about when you're looking at dates to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Excellent point. Go ahead, Trudy Hammond.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way. And that's a good point, Rusty, and, and I was thinking the free food that would be offered normally by the city, maybe they could just print out $1 coupons for the businesses that will be there and vending for us customers. So that's food for thought. The second part is, I was wondering, I got, I came in late. I had a successful adoption. The second part is, I was wondering, I got, I came in late, I had a successful adoption. And I was wondering about the question I asked last meeting with the OIP and the property that was purchased, and. Why is there no activity with the purchase of that property? Um, I think it was a trailer company, and there's supposed to be jobs and stuff available. I was wondering if there was an answer for that yet.
I can answer just a little bit about that, Trudy. I know that they have put a fence around the property, and I think they're working on a small temporary building. Um, I know the city, I know that Brian tried working with them many, many times, our pro tem. In the meantime, tried working with them, and I'm not sure if Kevin has had a chance to meet with them, but I can say that the. City side has attempted multiple times to help them, and I think there's only so many things that the city can do, so. I think the ball's in their court is, I guess, what I'm I'm getting at. I don't think the city is hindering anything, so. Um, but I knew Chief probably has a little bit of news to report.
Yeah, I could just give a quick answer as much as I can. There is a planning process going into effect right now that I've actually been. Working with Texas Pride and our planning, our contract planners, so there is movement there. It's a process I don't understand because I'm not a planner, so we've asked for help from our L-Clog planners that are normal planners, and. Uh, we've had some emails back and forth.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. Um, Rusty, is that a new hand or an old hand?
Sorry. Take it down. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Dan Barclay.
Dan Barclay, four seven five oh one, Highway fifty eight, and first of all. I hope everybody understands and realizes that this council inherited, not created, a financial crisis. Um, not of their own making. All seven council members, and now the pro tem city administrator and and and. Finance director inherited a mess created by. Previous administrations in council. We have an audit a hundred and thirty nine days overdue, past due. Because of poor communication between former staff and the auditors. We have a horribly crafted public safety fee ordinance that. Eleven months, and we're eleven months into the into the fiscal year. And forty five days before the beginning of the next fiscal year, have yet to have a budget committee meeting. We haven't had a a bona fide fire chief. That was qualified to respond to a fire or medical emergency in almost seven years. Okay, this council didn't create it, they inherited it, and they took, you know, the job comes as is. But my question is, what, you know, this 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 public safety fee? The budget committee approved it, council adopted it. With a heavy reliance on. Revenues that were over. The that were that were overestimated. Collections that were underestimated, and here we are eleven months into the year, and we've collected a whopping thirty percent. Of a public safety fee that was horribly crafted and basically unenforceable. So my question is, we're gonna get the audit, what, after? We just, we adopt the next budget, so the document that provides the strengths and weaknesses from the previous budget. Is not going to be available to these budget committee meetings that have. Committee that have yet to have a meeting because the first one got canceled because it was illegal, was improperly noticed. The second one was canceled. So the next, the the first budget committee committee meeting is the twenty fourth of May. You know, within thirty days of adopting a budget? I don't envy anybody on council, the budget. It's not the first time that council has has endured. Um, the departure of the city administrator, the finance director, and the mayor. In a six month period of time. I feel your pain. I've been there, done that, and you can ask Jerry. It's not, it makes the job more difficult, more complicated, but it's not impossible. I'm just wondering what the plan is, because there is a crisis here, and what? What are we doing to to undo? A decade old history of overspending and coming up short on the budget. Because we don't know how to reduce costs, or we don't know how to reduce costs enough, or, you know, let's just collect more from the citizens, because. We don't want to reduce anything or change anything. We just want to collect more. So I'm just kind of curious, what is the priority? What is the plan? And I do apologize to this council because none of you created it. You have been cleaning up somebody else's crap, somebody else's mess from the moment you swore an oath of office. And I and I feel for you. Trust me, I do. Other than that, on a positive note, because it's raining enough outside, it doesn't need to be raining in the meeting. On a positive note, James Clevinger, you look pretty dapper this evening. That's all I had.
This is Sissy Ketchin.
Go ahead.
Four eight three zero zero Meadow Way. It must be said that it is absolutely. A catastrophic blow to our children if it's true that the high school library is closing. And I do not see how we can prepare our children for university. And technical trades without an adequate library resource. This is a devastating blow to a community that already only has their children in school four days a week, and it must be said, I want to go on record. It is a devastating blow to the culture and community of Oak Ridge, and it should not be tolerated. Thank you.
Mayor, can I put my citizen hat on for a second?
Absolutely.
Uh, Kevin Martin, four seven seven one three Commercial Street. And being the school board chair, I have not heard anything about the library, the high school library closing, so I I as well am going to check, and. Sissy Ketchin, if you would like to come to one of our school board meetings and and relay that to the school as well. I will find out what's going on, because I hadn't heard that either, and that upsets me, so.
Nothing I could say would have any gravitas, but it's for the parents to rally. We must rally around these children and their education. Our numbers are lowest in Oregon for educating our children. We have to stand by our kids and get them prepared for life. Thank you, Kevin. I will try and do that.
And that's all I had, Mayor, as a citizen. I'll just look into that, because I I I want to see, because we haven't, I haven't heard anything about it, so we'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you. Um, I I did want to say one thing that, just for the record, the City of Oak Ridge does not control the. Oak Ridge School Library, so I do implore any citizens that would like to get involved in that, please attend the school board meetings. That is the place to raise your concerns. Um, at that board. Um, second, Dan Barclay, I appreciate your sentiments, and it's a very long question, so. I will try to gather my thoughts together and say something in public comment at the next meeting, and if any other counselors would like to say anything, I encourage you to do so as well. There any more public comments? Any more staff? Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
Can I put my citizen hat on?
Oh, you are an elected official.
Okay, I just wanted to let Kevin know, I. As the counselor, I forwarded the email that I received as my minutes from the library board. So I just sent it to you, and that's where it says it in there. So I will check tomorrow to in person to see what's going on. Thank you.
All right, if there is any other public comments. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight four, oh, excuse me. We did have an originally an executive session scheduled, and we are canceling that tonight. Um, our attorney, we just don't have enough information for the meeting tonight, so that executive session will be rescheduled. As for anything else, looks like we're done, and adjourning the meeting at eight forty one PM. Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you, Chief.
Good night.